Oh wow. Yeah, wow. Yeah.
And then the personnel ratification report.
I don't know.
Well, I probably would say four thirty. Just feeling safe.
Ingrid, what do you think?
I agree, because I think we're gonna need to bring the new board members up to speed on the lobbyist contract. So there'll be some pre discussion.
Yep, I think you're right. One thing I would ask is when we get the personal ratification report and the homeschool report, that you have your staff provide a one page executive summary?
On both of them.
On both. Yep. And just one of the things to always ask is how does it compare to the previous year's report, like the personal ratification report?
Yep.
And other things, if they could have a quick summary that might allow us to go through those two documents a little quicker.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question please?
Sir.
In latter part of last year, we talked about a new format for presentations, which this seems like that will be in sync with that. And superintendent, I think you put that together. Is it your intention that future presentations in committee and elsewhere will follow that?
The one page exec summary, what I shared with the board at the meeting about, it was my intention for board meetings.
Okay.
For board meetings. But there's no reason that that couldn't shift into committee meetings.
I think it just might be beneficial to have that type of discipline in committees so that when those things go.
Yeah, carries over. Yeah. So if that's what you like, we can do it.
Ingrid, do you have any comments?
Oh, you know, I love an executive summary. I'm never going to turn down an executive summary.
All right. Ms. Gordon is also here online. Ms. Gordon, do you have anything you'd like to add about the executive session part?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Leah Frazier is on as well, and I don't know who L H of the person is on. There's somebody else on. I'm not sure who they are.
Okay, let's bring that up here. So Ms. Frazier, do you have any comments about what we're going to discuss on executive session?
You're muted, Ms. Frazier. Okay.
Her camera's off as well.
Correct.
Okay, well, I think we'll have to move on. All right. A public session would then start at six o'clock, four thirty for.
Executive session.
Executive session. And months of celebration. We have S T November student of the month for Southern Beaufort County and December student of the month. And the high school cross country state champions from. Lefton High School, May River High School Girls Golf being. Wow. National Wrestling Fall of Fame. George Dixon. I don't know.
I'd have to follow up with McCracken.
Okay. And school board appreciation month.
They have, so every year you all are asked to sign your affirmation that, so I don't know if that's if you want to do that at that time or if we want to do it all, but that would be.
We can do it sometime at our leisure before we leave.
All right.
I don't want to take time up doing that during the meeting.
So we'll just announce that it's National School Boards Appreciation Month.
Yeah.
There is a thing for the governor to be read, so proclamation, that's the word.
Proclamation?
Yes. So I've received a proclamation to be read.
Posted.
Okay.
They want it, they can get a hard copy.
Okay.
We're not going to read it.
Okay.
No offense. I'm sure the governor McMaster won't be insulted. Committee reports, I don't believe we'll have any committee reports.
The first one is the chair report. Do you want?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll talk about having a chair report.
We won't have any committee reports.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Student achievement, we have a presentation on professional learning community.
On a.
Professional learning community.
Professional learning.
P L C.
P L C.
And that will come with an executive summary.
Okay. Anything else in the superintendent's report?
That's it. I do have board business action.
Okay.
Under board business action, we need to add the Riverview Annual Report, Riverview Charter School Annual Report. And Levante Singleton will be there to deliver that information.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have anything else?
Um.
Okay. And then we have the consent agenda. And future agenda topics from the board. And announcements. Second public comments. So Dallas, anything we're missing?
Not at this time, sir. Yeah, not at this.
All right, anything we're missing?
No, but I was just looking to see if last year, because it is kind of odd since we have the big break in between. And I don't think there's anything that we have on there normally. So it should be a relatively quick meeting.
That's a shame. Ms. Gordon, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this?
No, not at this time.
Are you going to, I'm sorry, Colonel Guy, are you going to announce the committee assignments at that meeting?
Yes.
Is that under your chair report or is that?
Yes, on the chair report.
Well, I'll think about it. Under superintendent's report, under other matters, I don't want to list it yet. But it is possible that I can have one additional item on a program that the state is putting out there for consideration on a strategic compensation piece for certain schools. So I might have that if it's appropriate to do so, but I would have to add it be K now and be applicable at time.
And it's just not sure if it's strategic compensation.
That's what it's called, yeah. And it has to do with a performance based compensation piece.
Or all employees or just teachers or what?
No, this is at particular schools. That's one of the reasons where, you know, we're still digging into what they're offering, but it would be for a school based personnel.
Might be a good time to do that as far as the length of meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it would be great. I just don't know if it's going to fly or not, so I don't want to add it just yet, but if it's okay with you, I'd like the right to reserve the right to add that to the agenda between now and say Monday.
Any objection? Any objection?
No.
It's probably a timing reason why I don't have it on there. I mean, we could add it on there and I could remove it, but that's what you want.
We can wait.
Okay.
Plenty of time.
Well, you'll have it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Smith, do you have anything?
Committee reports in terms of, see, a vote may take place on any potential recommendations.
That's coming up, because we won't have any committee reports for this meeting.
Oh, okay, okay. And in terms of the. The. The committees, you had discussed it, yeah, didn't you?
Before you came, we discussed it. It's not on the agenda that was published, so we cannot talk about committee assignments. If it would be on the agenda for the chair's report on the twenty first.
Okay, so we'll discuss it then.
We won't discuss it. We were going to discuss it here. I'm going to talk to every board member individually about their choices and what they want to do. But we unfortunately take responsibility. I didn't make sure that it was on this agenda for this meeting. That was my intent, but I didn't get it on the agenda.
Okay, well, also, I know also that in past practice that the chairman would announce the, for the public and for the board members, at the meeting for the chair will also normally pronounce who's on what committees and what the other black.
Yes, he will.
That will.
That will happen during the chair's report.
Okay, okay.
If there's no other business.
We did.
You do?
So for when we talk about another board meeting agenda, another board meeting, so we need to reschedule the joint S I C board meeting.
Oh, yeah.
That was canceled in December.
Okay, that's a separate.
Oh, I thought we moved on from.
No.
You're talking about this agenda.
Yeah.
This is.
Yeah. And then we have the consent agenda. And future agenda topics from the board. And announcements. Second public comments. So Dallas, anything we're missing?
Not at this time, sir. Yeah, not at this.
All right, anything we're missing?
No, but I was just looking to see if last year, because it is kind of odd since we have the big break in between. And I don't think there's anything that we have on there normally. So it should be a relatively quick meeting.
That's a shame. Ms. Gordon, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this?
No, not at this time.
Are you going to, I'm sorry, Colonel Guy, are you going to announce the committee assignments at that meeting?
Yes.
Is that under your chair report or is that?
Yes, on the chair report.
Well, I'll think about it. Under superintendent's report, under other matters, I don't want to list it yet. But it is possible that I can have one additional item on a program that the state is putting out there for consideration on a strategic compensation piece for certain schools. So I might have that if it's appropriate to do so, but I would have to add it be K now and be applicable at time.
And it's just not sure if it's strategic compensation.
That's what it's called, yeah. And it has to do with a performance based compensation piece.
Or all employees or just teachers or what?
No, this is at particular schools. That's one of the reasons where, you know, we're still digging into what they're offering, but it would be for a school based personnel.
Might be a good time to do that as far as the length of meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it would be great. I just don't know if it's going to fly or not, so I don't want to add it just yet, but if it's okay with you, I'd like the right to reserve the right to add that to the agenda between now and say Monday.
Any objection? Any objection?
No.
It's probably a timing reason why I don't have it on there. I mean, we could add it on there and I could remove it, but that's what you want.
We can.
We can wait.
We can get plenty of time.
Well, you'll have it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Smith, do you have anything?
Committee reports in terms of, see, a vote may take place on any potential recommendations.
That's coming up, because we won't have any committee reports for this meeting.
Oh, okay, okay. And in terms of the. The. The committees, you had discussed it, yeah, didn't you?
Before you came, we discussed it. It's not on the agenda that was published, so we cannot talk about committee assignments. It would be on the agenda for the chair's report on the twenty first.
Okay, so we'll discuss it then.
We won't discuss it. We were going to discuss it here. I'm going to talk to every board member individually about their choices and what they want to do. But we unfortunately take responsibility. I didn't make sure that it was on this agenda for this meeting. That was my intent, but I didn't get it on the agenda.
Okay, well, also, I know also that in past practice that the chairman would announce the, for the public and for the board members, at the meeting for the chair will also normally pronounce who's on what committees and who's on the other black.
Yes, he will.
That will.
That will happen during the chair's report.
Okay, okay.
Okay. If there's no other business.
We did.
You do?
So for when we talk about another board meeting agenda, another board meeting, so we need to reschedule the joint S I C board meeting.
Oh, yeah.
That was canceled in December.
Okay, that's a separate.
Oh, I thought we moved on from.
No.
You're talking about this agenda. Uh, and superintendent, I think you put that together. Is is it your intention that future presentations in committee and elsewhere will follow that?
The one page exec summary, what what I shared with the board at the at the meeting about uh it it was my intention for board meetings.
Okay.
Uh, for for board meetings, um, but you know, there's there's no reason that that couldn't shift into many meetings.
I think it just my
You know what I mean?
I think it'd be beneficial to have that type of discipline in committee so that when those things
Yeah, carries over.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if if that's what what you like, we can do it.
Ingrid, do you have any comments?
Oh, you know, I love an executive summary. I'm never gonna turn down an executive summary.
All right, uh, Ms. Gordon is also here online. Ms. Gordon, do you have anything uh you'd like to add about the executive session part?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Leah Frazier is on as well, and I don't know who L H other person is on. There's somebody else on. I'm not sure who they are.
Okay, let's uh let's bring that up here. So Ms. Frazier, do you have any comments about the what we're gonna discuss on executive session?
Um, muted.
You're you're muted, Ms. Frazier.
Okay.
Her camera's off as well.
Correct.
Okay, well, I think we'll have to have to move on. All right, uh, our public session will then start at six o'clock or 30 for
Executive session.
Executive session. And uh months of celebration. We have S T November month student of the month for Southern Beaufort County and December student of the month. And the high school cross country state champions from Boston High School, May River High School Girls Golf.
Big wow.
Wow. National Wrestling Fall of Fame. George Dixon, um, I don't know.
I'd have to follow up with Mr. McCracken.
Okay. And it's School Board Appreciation Month.
They have, um, so every year you all are asked to sign um your affirmation that um so I don't know if that's if you want to do that at that time or if we want to do it all, but that would be
We can do it sometime at our leisure before we leave.
All right.
I don't want to take time up
Okay.
doing that during the meeting.
So we'll just announce that it's National School Boards Appreciation Month.
Yeah.
There is a um um thing for the governor to be read, so um proclamation, that's the word.
Proclamation?
Yes. So I've I've received a proclamation to be read.
Posted.
Okay.
They want it, they can get a hard copy.
Okay.
We're not gonna read it.
Okay.
No offense.
Nothing.
I'm sure I'm sure the the Governor McMaster won't be insulted. Uh, committee reports, I don't think we'll have any committee reports.
The first one is a chair report. Do you want?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll talk about I have a chair report.
We won't have any committee reports, so.
Superintendent's report.
Student Achievement, we have a uh uh presentation on professional learning community.
I mean
Professional Learning Community.
Professional Learning
P L C.
P L C.
And uh that will come with an executive summary.
Okay.
All of that, so.
Okay. Anything else in the superintendent's report?
No, that's that's it. I do have board business action.
Okay.
Under board business action, uh, we need to add the Riverview uh annual report, Riverview Charter School Annual Report. And uh uh Levante Singleton will be there for to deliver that information.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have anything else?
Sure.
Um, mm hmm. Good night.
Okay.
Good.
And then we have the consent agenda. And future agenda topics from the board. And announcements. Second public comments. So Dallas, anything we're missing?
Uh, not at not at this time, sir. Um. Yeah, not at
All right, anything was missing?
No, but I was just looking to see if last year, because it is kind of odd since we have the big break in between. Um, and I don't think there's anything that we have on there normally. So it'll be should be a relatively quick meeting.
Uh, that's that's a shame. Uh, Ms. Gordon, do you have anything that you'd like to uh add to this?
No, not at this time.
Well, are you going to, I'm sorry, Colonel Guy, are you going to um announce the committee assignments at that meeting?
Yes.
Is that under your chair report or is that?
Yes, on the chair report.
Um, oh, I'll think about it under superintendent's report under other matters. I don't want to list it yet, uh, but it is possible that I can have one additional item on a on a program that the state is uh putting out there for consideration on a strategic compensation piece for uh certain schools, so um I might have that if if it's appropriate to do so, but I would have to add it uh between now and the appropriate time.
And it's just not sure if it's Strategic compensation?
That's what it's called, yeah. And it has to do with uh uh a performance based uh compensation piece.
Or all employees or just teachers or what?
Uh, no, this is at uh particular schools. That's one of the reasons where, you know, we're still we're still digging into what they're offering, but it would it would be uh for a school based uh personnel.
Might be a good time to do that as far as the length of meeting and everything.
Yeah, yeah, it would be great. I just I just don't know if if uh if it's gonna fly or not, so I don't wanna add it just yet, but if it's okay with you, I like the right to uh reserve the right to add that to the agenda uh between now and say Monday.
Any objection? Any objection?
No.
It's probably the timing reason why I don't have it on there. I mean, we could add it on there and I could remove it, but that's what you all, how you want to handle it.
We can
We can wait. Okay.
Plenty of time.
Well, you'll have it. Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, um, Mr. Smith, do you have anything?
Uh, for committee committee reports in terms of uh since a vote may take place on any potential recommendations?
That's coming up because we won't have any committee reports for this meeting.
Oh, okay, okay, that's okay. And 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 um and in terms of the um the uh the the committees, um, yeah, yeah, discussed it, yeah, I've got.
We before you came, we discussed it. Uh, it's not on the agenda that was published, so we cannot talk about uh committee assignments. If it be on the uh agenda for the chair's report, that's my first.
Okay, so we so we'll discuss it then and
We won't discuss it. We were going to discuss it here. I'm gonna talk to every board member individually about their their choices and what they want to do. But we unfortunately I take responsibility. I didn't make sure that it was on uh this agenda for this meeting. I I that was my intent, but I didn't uh I didn't get it uh get it on the agenda.
Okay, well, also there's also I know also that the uh in uh in past practice that the also the chairman would uh announce the uh the uh for the for the public and for the board members at the meeting for the uh the the chair will also normally pronounce uh who's on what committees and what the other like.
Yes, it will.
So that will
Have a cap during the chair's report.
Okay, okay.
Okay. If there's no other business.
Um, we did.
You do?
Um, so for when we talk about another board meeting agenda, another board meeting, so we need to reschedule the joint S I C board meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, we that was canceled in December.
Hey, this that's a that's a separate
Oh, I thought we moved on from
No, I
Oh, okay. You're talking about this agenda. I'm sorry.
Move that we really move on to this agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So is that all right with you, Ms. All right to move on to the next topic? Mr. Dallas?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, just go ahead.
So we're through with this agenda.
Thank you.
Um.
So January 21st. And the discussion of uh any other board meeting agendas, and so that's what's covered on, and that's the the joint S I C.
Yes, I was going to propose um the date of Thursday, January, let me get the date. Um, January 23rd.
January 23rd.
Um, we would have keep the same agenda that was published, um, but I would just verify that Bupton High would would still be available.
Uh, so Bupton High at 6:00 P. M.
Correct.
Correct.
For the 23rd, if that's okay.
Joining S I C with the same agenda items that we had before.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll need to get that out to all the schools, so all the S I students are
Are you all okay with that date?
I do you have any objections?
Oh.
Ms. Bellwright, you have any that date?
So the 21st and the 23rd, then a work session on the 31st, that's what we have in January.
Yep.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, any other comments from Mr. Smith or Ms. Gordon?
No, not from Gordon.
Okay, Gordon?
Have we set the agenda for the uh work session?
We're we haven't set that yet.
Yep.
We have to have another
That would that we would set that agenda on the 22nd.
On the 22nd.
Of January, yes.
Okay. Another agenda setting meeting then scheduled for the 22nd. And that'll be at five five o'clock again. Is that all right with you, Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes, this.
Is that all right with you, Mr. Dow?
Yes, sir.
This, all right, is that okay? I see you. Agenda setting meeting, five o'clock on January the date, January
23rd. Yep. And
No, the 22nd.
Oh, the 22nd.
Wednesday, S I C.
Yeah, Wednesday, the 22nd would be a agenda setting at five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Because that's the day after the board meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. That's fine. The agenda setting is on the 22nd.
Correct.
The joint board S I C.
I see would be on the 23rd.
Third, yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm good with all of it. Okay, good with all of it.
Yeah, boom, boom, boom.
Yep, good with all of it.
Any comments, Mrs. Smith? Ms. Gordon, any any issues?
None. Very good.
Okay. Okay, then I think we are finished, are we not? Robin?
Yep, that's all I have, sir.
So uh based on uh consent agenda or everything else is done, and so for uh we'll we'll move uh determined by unanimous consent unless there is a objection.
No objection here.
No objection.
I'm good.
Thank you very much.
I'll move. Thank you, Colonel Guyer.